Twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen. Road call, please, Kathy.
Mark Eastman.
Here.
Paul Rabs.
Here.
David Keane.
Here.
David Keane.
Here.
Peter Stewart.
Here.
Paul Donahue.
Here.
Robert Carmichael.
Okay, item three is presentation of any town council recognitions. I don't believe we have any tonight. Item four is consider minutes of previous meetings. We have the minutes from July twelfth, two thousand eighteen. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
We have a motion and second approve the minutes from July twelfth, two thousand eighteen. Any further from the council? All those in favor, opposed, motion passes. Item five, receive and review correspondence and documents. We have something from the Down East Transportation Ridership Report. Susan?
Yes, we have the June Ridership Report from Down East Transportation that indicates what the Ridership was for the bus and for the cab, which is an increase. And we also have a report someplace in this stack of papers that was provided by Leslie Rabs, who has been working on, here we go, transportation figures for the shuttle and the taxi. It shows that year-to-date through June of eighteen, there were three hundred and thirty-two riders, two tokens, and fourteen tokens. And in June of two thousand seventeen, there were four hundred and four riders and twelve. So the bus Ridership is down slightly. However, the taxi service in June of two thousand seventeen was forty-nine for June, whereas in June of two thousand seventeen, it was only twenty-six. So it's nearly double the taxi Ridership that has been happening. And they continue to distribute flyers. They distributed three hundred in July. And new stops as the RSU Central Office for ten flyers and new stops for more flyers to continue to inform people on the availability of this service. So thanks to Down East Transportation and many thanks to Leslie Rabs and the Senior Resource Committee, who is working on this on an ongoing basis.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, we're going to go on to item six, ordinances to be considered or introduced. First one being second reading of chapter twelve, Traffic and Safety. Who's the chairman of that?
I'm the chair, but Jeff was here, too.
Thank you, Jeff Hammond, Code Officer. Would you like me to do that brief presentation that I gave you in the first reading? To show you what the purpose of the ordinance is?
Counsel, we want to see that. Well, for the people that might not have been here for that, yeah.
Okay. It just takes a moment, a couple of minutes. So this proposed change of chapter twelve, there's two changes, actually. This is the first change. It deals with parking restrictions in the Town Office parking lot, which is the parking lot right next to the Town Office, which the Town Office is right here. And the purpose of this change is to allow two parking spaces for the new owner of the old chamber building, the old Town Office, which is right here. That has changed hands now. And one of the conditions of the sale was that they be given two designated parking spaces in this parking lot for their user tenant use. The problem is, right now, the Town Office parking lot language here prohibits overnight parking. So the change to this is to add except in designated areas, and the designated areas will be identified with signage. The second change is to address a, an overlooked omission in the ordinance. The signs we have on our waterfront say no bicycles, skateboards, roller skates, and scooters are allowed. In the ordinance, it doesn't mention scooters. So we're supposed to add the word scooter in there to make that clear. However, it was recently brought up to my attention that it's not made clear about the use of motorized scooters for mobility purposes, not for recreational purpose, but for mobility purposes. It's never been raised before, but now because I guess we're talking about the word scooter, the question comes up. And partly because the definition of toy vehicle is kind of hard to see, if I can raise that up a little bit. The definition of toy vehicle talks about non-motorized scooters. It doesn't mention motorized scooters. So it's unclear in this ordinance how motorized scooters are regulated on the waterfront walkway. I think that probably we should talk about that, just see if we do need to make some additional changes in the ordinance to clarify that. So you have on the agenda, I think, surely a consideration of adoption of this ordinance, so I'm going to suggest that you have not adopted, but instead refer back to the Regulatory Review Committee for further study. Any questions? Did you want to get public input?
Yeah. Any input from the public on this?
We have in your, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
The overnight parking, overnight parking applies to designated.
That hasn't been determined, actually.
Any other questions from the public? From the council? Okay.
There is, there is an email in your packet along with this, which raised the issue for Jeff in regard, from Mary Jane Bush and Pat Ranzoni in regard to making sure that this prohibition for scooters didn't limit those with ability challenges who utilize motorized scooters, and that's the.
So we should go back into final a little more?
Yes.
All set. Okay, we'll go on to item B, first reading of chapter thirteen, Property Maintenance Standards.
So this, this came out of the, actually, it was the ordinance committee at the time that reviewed this. It contains property maintenance provisions that were taken out of chapter five, which I'll explain to you when we get to the next ordinance review, why that was done. And they were placed in a new chapter in the town code called chapter thirteen, Property Maintenance Standards. They essentially reword and add some clarity to the existing property maintenance standards and also include demolition standards, which are currently now in chapter five as well. One thing that, in terms of property maintenance standards that was added, that's not currently in chapter five, deals with vegetated landscaping. First of all, I want to point out that the property maintenance standard is not a keep-your-property-lookingPretty ordinance. It's a safety ordinance. Talks about safety. How to maintain your property to ensure safety. So the section I'm going to read to you on vegetated landscaping has nothing to do about what the property looks like for aesthetic purposes. Vegetated landscaping is not required to be maintained, except that no vegetated landscaping on any abandoned property in the compact area may be uncared for to the extent that a public safety concern is identified by the CEO for any of the following reasons. Number one, overgrown vegetation has become a fire risk to buildings or structures. Number two, overgrown vegetation has become a habitat or cover for wildlife that may cause injury, disease, or property damage. And number three, overgrown vegetation provides cover for unauthorized use or illegal activity.
Got a question. You say it's just for safety, but it's just in the compact zone?
That one provision, yes.
Right, but if it's just for safety, it should be in all zones. Because you would have that on Jacobak Pond, if there is an abandoned house, I would have those same issues, would I not?
I think it would.
But that's where we differ here, because I disagree when you say it's for looks. Because if it's just in the compact zone, it has to do with looks.
Well, I think, I think when we talked about this at the committee level, it was pointed out that the compact area is a densely developed part of town. So things like, for example, overgrown vegetation that is considered a fire risk, which is more likely to be an impact when you have neighbors that are close to one another. Out back, you don't. They're spread apart. So, yeah, maybe you could have overgrown vegetation out back that allows vermin to, to habitate or covers illegal activity. But I think the committee decided that they wanted to focus just on the compact area, mainly because it's the most densely developed part of town. That was, I think, the recommendation of the committee. You can change that if you like.
I'm just saying, we, we start off with it's not because pretty, but if it's, that's my whole thing, is I believe that that's wrong. I think it is because of looks. Partially. I, I agree with all your, everything that you said. I think that is an issue. But we can't start off with it's not because of looks. Looks has something to do with it. I think it should be, if we're going to have it for one, it should be for all, in my opinion. But I think that causes the, those same hazards could be caused on my road by an abandoned house than it could be anywhere. And probably, yeah, a fire hazard, it could destroy a lot of vegetation before it gets to my house, but that's still destroying stuff.
Is this just for abandoned buildings?
Yes.
It, specifically for vegetated landscaping. You know, we have some areas in town that are on properties in the village district that have vegetation that's not part of the landscaping scheme. This is there. It's in a ditch, or, you know, it's just wild vegetation that's allowed to grow freely. This pertains just to the landscape portions of your lot.
For abandoned property, right? That's what it says.
Yes, yes, yeah. Abandoned property, yeah.
This is the first reading, right?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Is there a public hearing?
It will be if we get to a second.
Right, okay.
If you want to hold one, you can make that determination.
Any comments from the public?
Can I wrap up?
Oh, okay.
So to go on, there are standards that deal with buildings and structures, outdoor storage. Demolition standards in here, there's nothing changed in demolition standards. It's the same language as in chapter five now. Section eight did contain a provision that was called safety inspections. It was a requirement for multifamily buildings to be inspected once every five years. The committee considered that. There was law discussion and public input, and the committee decided to take that out, so that's not part of this ordinance for your review tonight. Nuisances are further defined as a nuisance or a dangerous nuisance, and it explains how you arrive at the determination of a dangerous nuisance. And the enforcement provisions are morally, more clearly explain how enforcement works. There's an appeal provision that's currently in chapter five. There is an appeal provision, but you have to take your appeal to Superior Court. This allows you to take an appeal directly to the local Board of Appeals. And there's also waiver provisions, which are not in the ordinance right now. So there are certain situations where a requirement of the chapter can be waived for good cause. And there's a definition section, so. That's a basic description of what this ordinance is all about.
Okay, how's, how's the council feel about basically having a public hearing on, on this matter?
You'd do that for second reading. You can make that determination there.
We have to ask for it, though, don't we? We have to ask for the public hearing?
You have to make a determination that you want to hold a public hearing, yes, in regard to this, but can you make that part of the second hearing, or second reading?
You actually, you conduct your second reading and then hold a public hearing.
Okay. So it can be on the same day?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So we need to, motion for a public hearing?
Right. Okay, we have a motion and second to request a public hearing for chapter thirteen, Property Maintenance Standards. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, we're going on to item C, first reading of chapter five, Building Codes and Standards. Jeff?
So the, chapter five currently is called Building Standards and the Building Code, Property Maintenance Standards. So it has building regulations in it, as well as property maintenance. And as I said earlier, taking the property maintenance language out and moving to chapter thirteen. So that leaves chapter five as primarily only, only addressing all the building types of regulations that we have in this town. And it also addresses when permits are required. And there's a big difference between permit requirements now and what's being proposed. What's being proposed has twenty separate items that are identified as exempt from permitting. And I don't know how many there are currently, but there's far fewer, far fewer exceptions now, so the ordinance committee carefully reviewed that, and they thought these were good things to exempt from permitting. It's, it's also clarified in this change, chapter five, what building codes and standards that we enforce in town. And primarily, it is the main uniform and building, main form, main uniform building and energy code, or MUBAC for short. We enforce that since July first, two thousand twelve. There was a lot of concern initially about the impact of enforcing that in this town. But I have found it to be fairly seamless. Most of the residential construction that's happening in Bucksport, whether the contractors know it or not, they're, they're either meeting or exceeding what the code requirements are in the state code. The primary difference would be the energy code, our values are a little higher in basement installations required, so it does affect the property, the building costs somewhat, but the benefit of increasing insulation is you reduce your energy costs and you get, you get a return on that investment. And of course, there are other, there are other codes that we enforce, including a change that the state recently made to the MUBAC to add language for tiny houses. It's in Appendix B in the, in the MUBAC. And the committee, it was suggested we adopt that to allow tiny houses in the town of Bucksport, and the committee thought that would be a good idea. And the land use ordinance has already recognized tiny houses in every area of town where traditional multifamily buildings are allowed. A tiny house would be allowed. The code also recognizes the continuing enforcement of NFPA 101, which is the Life Safety Code. We've been enforcing that code for a long time. And of course, the plumbing code, subservice ways of disposal codes, a portion of the main fuel board rules. Now, we're not enforcing the entire set of rules, but only the portion that pertains to the installation and maintenance of oil supply tanks. We don't enforce electrical codes in Bucksport. I haven't, never done that, and this ordinance is not proposing we start doing that. It does make it clear that, that if you're doing your own electrical installations, you need to provide evidence to the town that it meets the applicable electrical codes. If you've hired a licensed electrician, you don't need to do that. Matter of fact, your housing standards are essentially the same. And we have some fence regulations, which just duplicate what's already there. Swimming pool, fences around swimming pools are still required. As I said earlier, we've added an appeal section that allows appeals to be taken directly to the Board of Appeals. Waivers and modifications are added to make exceptions when they make sense to do that. And the enforcement section is clarified. And there's also a definition section. So that's, in a nutshell, that's the proposed changes to chapter five. It's a repeal and replacement of the ordinance. So the repeal would be to completely remove the content of the current chapter five, which includes the property maintenance standards. And then, and then you'd be adopting the new chapter five, which is just building standards. And hopefully, chapter thirteen as well, which is where the property maintenance standards will go.
Okay, how would the council?
Make a motion for second reading and a public hearing?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for a second reading and also a public hearing. As it refers to chapter five, Building Codes and Standards. Any further from the public? Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to mention, Jeff, did you give some kind of communication to Jill Johanning about the one? You may get one that concerns the ADA standards and that sort of thing. We just hope you will consider it.
So, well, I think what this, this lady's talking about is a request was made by Mary Jane Bush for us to consider adding additional oversight of the ADA standards. The state, when they updated the MUBAC to the two thousand fifteen codes, in the IBC, there's a chapter that addresses accessibility standards. When the MUBAC was first adopted, that chapter was not adopted. But when they updated to two thousand fifteen, they added chapter eleven. So now, when there is a construction project, renovation or new construction, there'll be a, a review of that project for compliance with the ADA accessibility. It's not, it's not a full compliance review. It's a, it's a compliance review for what's applicable for that particular building. I suppose it's possible that you could add additional regulations in chapter five that add further requirements for compliance. But I'm not recommending you do that at this time. Perhaps when I do hear from Jill Johanning, who works for Alpha One and is an expert on ADA requirements, I may be bringing something back to you to, to consider, but for the time being, I, I'm not sure we need to do anything else beyond what the MUBAC requires us to do for accessibility review.
Anything else from the public? Anything from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, item D is ordinance adoption. I believe we're going to table this.
Refer it back to committee?
Refer it back to the committee? Have to take a vote on that?
The chapter twelve, you refer it back to committee in the first part.
Okay. We're all set on that? Okay, we'll go on to item seven, discussion items. For managers clarification or direction or council discussion. First one being Regulatory Review Committee update.
We had the meeting this evening. The Regulatory Review Committee, we met at six o'clock to discuss two land use items. The first one is, there's an increasing number of citizens using recreational vehicles for dwellings in Bucksport. Currently, year-round occupancy of RVs is prohibited. We had a discussion, in fact, there was a fellow here tonight that stated his case, and what it line is that no enforcement action would be taken with him, and that further that Jeff would propose language for future review by the committee. The second one was, item, next item was regarding a quote "meeting facility" unquote. And that's currently prohibited use in the village district. Citizen has approached both the CEO and the planning board and requested that the town consider changing the prohibition so she could be able to rent her home and yacht to outdoor events, wedding receptions, and other social activities for gatherings up to a hundred people. In the end, a three to zero vote, no vote, was taken by the members of the committee. And then finally, last item on the agenda this evening was a request for ordinance spanning plastic bag, plastic shopping bags. And in the end, it was agreed that we will go with, go forward with a non-binding referendum in the November election to have the people in town say nay or yay or nay, get their opinion on that.
That needs to go for a council vote, though, correct?
Correct.
That would appear on your next agenda for you to decide whether or not to put it out for referendum.
So that would require all the businesses in town to use?
Not use single, use plastic bags?
Do not use, not use plastic? They have to go to? It's a lot of money.
Okay, anything else, Paul?
No.
Okay. We're going on to item B, alternative LPI.
Our CEO, Jeff Hammond, who's also our LPI, and I had a discussion about concerns that happen if Jeff is on vacation or, or going to be away from the office in that way, that if there are those who are waiting for inspections for septic systems or that kind of thing, that if he's not here, we have no alternative LTI for Bucksport that I could turn to or that the town could contract with to do that work in his absence, so that someone didn't have to wait a week in order of. I say that because construction season here is limited, and if and so I asked Jeff to get me some information, and he spoke with a neighboring licensed plumbing inspector who would be willing to act as an alternate for Bucksport for plumbing inspections, septic system inspections, when Jeff was on vacation or scheduled to be away for more than a day. And it's on here to get feedback from the council as to whether you would be in favor of moving forward with that so that we had some redundancy in this area. And if someone's waiting for an inspection, I know a week doesn't sound like a long time, but it's a long time if you can't do anything until it's, you go get it done.
And what would we pay an alternative, you know, an alternative?
Forty dollars an inspection.
Would they be on call?
I would have to talk to them, but it, it would be scheduled, you know, that a scheduled time period that they would cover, and if they were called out, they would get paid so much for they perform this service in another community.
Seems like inefficient use.
Well, as I said, we're trying to serve the public as well as we can in having the ability to do have contingency planning for when someone is going to be out. Because right now, that's, Jeff is their, is their only alternative, and it's not that he can never take vacation or those kind of things, so it's we, we should have some ability for people to still get what they need and, and but I didn't want to move forward with this without talking to the council about whether or not you were supportive of that or not.
And will you bring a proposal to us at the next meeting, or?
Well, I would, if you're, if you're in favor of moving forward, I will speak with this person and see if there's a, a way that we can have something for the council to.
Motion to move forward?
We have a motion and second to move forward with getting a backup code enforcement.
Licensed plumbing inspector.
Licensed plumbing inspector, excuse me. Okay, anything further from the public on this? Yes, sir.
How has this been dealt with in the past?
It hasn't.
I can ask that question, I think. I, because of my sense of duty to the town to be certain that contractors aren't convenient, I, I take calls on my phone when I'm away. And I have actually interrupted my, my big.
I take calls on my phone when I'm away, and I have actually interrupted my vacation to come in and do a step, so that contractor won't be delayed to, in their progress of their work. But, so I've been doing that all along. I contacted the town manager and asked maybe if we could find a way to allow me to take some time off and leave work behind.
Anything else from the public? Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Okay, item C, finance committee update for seven twenty-six eighteen. Susan, who's the finance?
Right here, right here. Non-municipal agency funding policy. This is when, as people in the audience know, people would come up different social organizations and ask us to give them money, mostly because they were good people doing good things. Well, that's great, but we decided we needed a little more than that, and so we asked Sue to come up with some non-municipal organization, the groups that come up, funding request policy ideas, and the desire to add an accountability and community value assessment component to the review of non-municipal organizations' funding requests. In other words, if somebody wants money for social things, they'll come up. If they're, if they're already in existence, they'll give a review of what they've done and accomplished. If it's a new thing, then they'll give a report as to what they hope to accomplish and how they hope to accomplish it. So it's to put a little bit more muscle into what is deserving of the money and what maybe should be reconsidered, rather than just sort of rubber stamping some of these things. Have them come up with, sell the council on the idea, and there's some suggestions in here as to how to do that. It's a great idea, Sue came, and we pushed it over to the next meeting because it's four or five pages, and we didn't quite have time to consider it during the finance committee, so we're going to bring it up at the next committee and act on it, at the next council meeting, excuse me, and act on it. Any questions?
Any questions from the public? Sounds like this is ongoing. Okay, if there's no questions, we'll go on to item eight, agenda items. First one being to approve resolve R. two thousand nineteen oh five, to approve the sewer commitment for the fourth quarter of the fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen. How would the council like to proceed?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the sewer commitments for the fourth quarter. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item B, to approve resolve R. two thousand nineteen oh six, to approve the main municipal association voting ballot as recommended by MMA nominating committee. How would the council like to proceed?
So move.
We have a motion and a second to approve the main municipal association voting ballot as recommended. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item C, to approve resolve R. two thousand nineteen dash seven, to approve pay requisition twenty-seven for the sewer treatment plant project. Susan, can you give us any more on this one?
Yes, this is the first payment requisition you've seen in a long time, and what this does is this, this ends the, any amount owed to Apex Construction, who actually constructed the facility. And also pays our engineer for the work that was done related to inspection and engineering for that treatment facility. The amount of funds left in, in the system are the funds that we talked about dedicating to a solar array at that facility, and that's here. But this payment requisition ends the construction phase of the facility itself. That, that is complete and has been finished, so that's what this is.
How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second to pay their, pay requisition number twenty-seven for the sewer treatment plan. Anything further from the public? From the council?
Yeah, real quick, Susan, looking at the bills, and maybe you missed it and haven't seen in the past, but it seems to be a lot of charges just for administration with no, for what it's for. If I'm looking at these correct, on, at the bottom of our packet.
What page are you on?
I am on the last pages. The invoices, just, oh, this is eight or nine thousand dollars of administration charges that.
It's a percentage of the contract, it was part of a contract at the beginning, that there was a certain fee.
It changes, it changes every invoice.
It's a percentage of the.
Of what the number is?
Of the, what the number is, I believe. But the, the total administrative charges that are allowed under, construction administration had an, an initial budget of five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that's for engine, under the engineering portion.
So there's.
And then inspection had a budget of, I can't almost see this all.
It was a big number.
Four hundred and sixty-four.
Yeah.
They're large numbers. But the, the amount that our engineers, these invoices have been held, they've had several months that they haven't.
A couple of months, right.
They haven't gotten paid because there's been no payment requisition, and I have no authority to pay without a council vote, because this money does not come from our checking account, this comes from grant funding, and we receive a drawdown from.
So the money that we have left over will be able to do a solar array?
That's correct. The solar array and two pumps for redundancy at the pump station by Hannover, yes.
Okay, so that was going to be my question, Matt. Solar array is not part of this?
No, not part of this requisition. It's part of this budget, but it's here.
Okay, but they, and they, so one of the meetings, we were talking about a fence around the, that's.
That's part of this, too. That fence is on order and is, is part of this.
When will the solar be started?
The, the solar, because it's, the size it is, it has to go up to bid, so the engineer is working on a design for that so that we can put that up to bid.
Okay, have a question.
We have had information from a solar provider, but we have no ability to designate a provider. It's a, it's a federal government funding, and it requires a bid process.
Yes, sir.
There were some, there were some lines in there designating that they, they were asking for money for training. According to Mr. Webb, he'd been trained at every phase all the way through. And when I talked to him months ago, he said that, yeah, that his training was pretty much all up to date. And now, all of a sudden, I see that they're asking for money for training. I was wondering who was doing that and what it was all about.
The training money that was, that was part of this was ongoing as, as items were added to the, to the system. The, the secondary treatment is a different license level and a whole different operational than our, our, our primary treatment system. And so as pieces have been added, training is conducted in order to, for the operators to be able to utilize those individual pieces. That's the kind of training that's discussed and was budgeted for in the overall project.
The, the original bid that was put out that said that they were wanting to train somebody to operate that plant for thirty-eight thousand dollars, and they were going to produce a manual for forty thousand dollars. Have those numbers exceeded that?
I know that the man, and I do not believe that anything's exceeded those budgets, but I do know that the manual for, for the operation of the plant that includes all the manuals for all the parts and pieces are there, plus the training that goes along, is all part of this bid and has, has been received because the, that's what allowed the final payment to Apex. That, that was all part of that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, right? Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Okay, we're going to go on to item D, to approve resolve R. two thousand nineteen dash eight, to sell map fifty-two, lot twenty-eight, to Rosemary and Mark Bamford.
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Okay, item nine, resignations, appointments, assignments, or elections. I don't believe we have anything. We'll go on to item ten, approve quitclaim deeds. I don't believe we have any there either. Item eleven is town managers' report, Susan?
Yes. First, we had another successful Wednesday on Main with great music and the addition of guns and hoses, serving up their usual delicious food and the pies from the Garden Club, along with the plural creations that were donated, which was an unbeatable combination for the evening. Next Wednesday is another amazing offering with Sam Lardner and Barcelona at the Alamo. I encourage anyone and everyone who has the opportunity to participate. These are great events on Main Street on Wednesdays. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce, coordinator Shelby Wright, and everybody who volunteered to help make the Bay Festival another successful event for Bucksport. The weather cooperated as long as it could through early Sunday afternoon, and everyone I've talked to had a, had a good time at that event. Main Street Bucksport, and I provided you with a copy of Brooke's most recent report, a few highlights from that. They're launching a public art program, which is an idea they adopted from the Heart and Soul Program. And the first work is going to be a mural on the wall next to Camden National Bank as you go down the alley toward, to the marina, that will be unveiled at the Arts Festival on August tenth and eleventh. Kids on Main, which is the book reading program on Saturday mornings in conjunction with Literacy Volunteers of Maine and Walls Dairy Port, continues to be a raging success with over five hundred and ninety-five children and caregivers participating thus far in the program this summer. And they also sponsored Main Street Bucksport at a scavenger hunt during the base festival with many participants, and one lucky entrant won a hundred dollar cash prize. And the focus of that scavenger hunt was the downtown area and frequenting businesses, so that was all positive. The most recent annual edition of the Island Journal, which is a publication of the Island Institute in Rockland, has a wonderful article about Bucksport. It focuses on Bucksport and its residents and the positive attitude that the communities had moving forward following the closure of the mill. It highlights some of the steps that have been taken. I've ordered a copy of that, and when it gets here, I will post it on the website. I did see a preview of it, and I think you'll be pleased. The auditors were here for three days last week, and will be back to finish up August fifth and sixth. The audit has gone very well. The additional work is necessary because of the fact that the town received more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funding last year for the sewer treatment plant project, and that ramps up the standard required for that part of the audit. I met with DEP Commissioner Paul Mercer and the EPA Assistant to the Administrator Kenneth Wagner on Tuesday morning here in Bucksport. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss the importance of EPA funding of brownfields, remediation, and area-wide planning grants for the benefit of communities like Bucksport. The Assistant to the Administrator was here for other work with the DEP, but the Commissioner brought him to Bucksport so that he could see what was going on here and with the mill site and the town's redevelopment. I want to thank the Historical Society for the donation of day lilies to the town office for the area around the sign and the walkway up front. And I want to thank you also to the Public Works Crew for removing the dated hedges that were, and damaged hedges that were up front and around that stone. Weather permitting, planting of the lilies will be on Friday in that area. It gives it a different look, but it cleaned it up a lot. One of those hedges looks like somebody had taken a bite out of it. Anyway, that's been cleaned up. And the final thing I want to note is, and I said this on both earlier committee meetings, is tonight is the beginning of the town video, videoing and airing its committee meetings as well as its town council and its planning board meetings. That was another commitment that the town made during the budget process this year to add to a level of transparency was that committee meetings would be videoed and retained in the same way that council meetings are, so that the public can see what's going on. So we started that tonight, so that's another step forward.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add kudos to Main Street, I think it's the first of four fundraisers, Ron, Gene, Russell, both did a beautiful, beautiful place. But one thing, a lot of, a lot of people came out, had Jake Arling was down from Bangor, of course, he's been instrumental in some of these donations and fundraising, and President Mayne Nerf, and I was there, a lot of business people, a really nice event, so it was a good kickoff to, I think, another first of four of those, the Main Street.
And I wanted to add to the Main Street report that, you know, how to, how to motivate people in high school, and I think what's being done by Main Street is one of the very effective ways through a speaker series featuring Bucksport High School alum, alums doing innovative and creative things in the world. I think that's a very effective way to do it, and I wanted to congratulate Main Street for initiating that project.
Thank you. Okay, item twelve, is set public hearings or hold public hearings to approve any license or permits? I don't believe we have any license or permits, do we? We do?
I hope so.
Hi, Cassie.
Vegetable, gentle more vegetable.
Very much so.
Yeah, mercy, right?
Business is Terry's Produce, and I believe it's out at the old Eddie Mercer's store.
Motion approved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the outdoor vendor's license for Terry Roll. Business is Terry's Produce. Anything from the public? From the council? All those?
I was just, was this on a complaint that, why, I mean, he's been out there for over a month or so, why?
No, he was licensed last year, just expired.
So this is just a renewal, then?
Yes.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Okay, now, we're going to have public hearings on those items that were.
That's already been voted.
Okay, so we don't need to vote on that again. Okay. Okay, we'll go on to item thirteen then. Discussion items noted on the agenda for the council or public. We'll open it up to the public first. Any discussion items from the public? Yes, sir?
Here we go. I have some excerpts from the codes, Bucksport Town Codes. If you want to look at them, chapter two, section eight is employment classifications. And these go eight point one is full-time, eight point two is part-time, eight point three is temporary, eight point four is on-call, and eight point five is contracted, eight point six is appointed. These are all considered classifications which make us employees if we're in any of these classifications. Now, in the same chapter, under section eleven, eleven point eleven is political activity. Employees shall refrain from seeking or accepting nomination or election to any office in the town government, and from using their influence publicly in any way for or against any candidate for elective office. for elective office in the town government. I think that that's quite clear. Pretty much word for word written. That's your consideration.
I'm not sure what you're... Mr. Morrison?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure what you're getting to here from reading this code.
I've been told that Mr. Robbs is running for council, and I've also been told that he is on-call for our fire department. I don't think he's eligible to run, according to what the codes are telling me.
Did any of those say anything about on-call?
Yes, it did. Yes, he's considered in employment classification. He's employed by the town.
You had a reading from Main Municipal, right?
Main Municipal indicated that full-time employees were precluded from running for council office, and that an on-call provision is not a full-time job, and therefore, Mr. Robbs would not be in violation. We did refer this to MMA for a legal opinion.
Well, I can't give you a legal opinion, but I can give you the opinion of probably the public if they were to read this, I would think. I mean, it clearly says, "shall refrain from seeking or accepting nomination," and it doesn't say part-time, full-time, all the time, next week. It says employees.
Under the, under the, under the part of the charter that discusses prohibitions for elected officers, it's that they cannot have full-time employment with the town. That's what the charter says.
So you can sit there and look at this and form that opinion? That it says full-time?
No, they didn't form an opinion, sir. That's what the charter says.
I'm reading what the charter says.
The charter also says that town councils cannot be full-time employees of the town.
I understand that. But it also says that he is classified as an employee of the town, and this clearly says, without saying, full-time, part-time, anything. It doesn't refer to any particular type of employee. It just says, "employees shall refrain from seeking or accepting nomination or for election to any office in the town government." How can that be construed? It says full-time. It does not say full-time.
But the part you didn't print out is the one that said, "full-time employees." Because there is a part that says, "full-time employees."
But it has nothing to do with running for office.
It says the full-time employee cannot.
You have the codes right in front of you.
Well, based on your concerns, your voiced concerns, we decided to seek a legal opinion, and we sent this off to Main Municipal Association, and they came back with a legal opinion that we were not in violation, or that Mr. Robbs wasn't in violation of what you've just read.
Well...
You're not, I know you're not a lawyer, so we sought legal advice, and we're following the legal advice. But thank you for your concern.
I would add that in a small town like this, and I think most reasonable people would say that people that want to serve the government in the capacity, if we're going to make a big deal about a part-time or a on-call position, you're going to bring that up.
I didn't...
Try to exclude good people from running for any office, for any, in a small town like Bucksport.
It's not what I'm saying.
I think it's picky. I think it's nitpicky, and it's much ado of nothing to create something that isn't there yet. That's my opinion. Your title is yours, and I'll take the mine.
I'm not giving you an opinion. I'm giving you written information.
At the expense of somebody else, and I think nobody else cares about.
This is a personal thing. I'm not, I'm not attacking your personal...
But we seek...
I'm just saying that this is what the codes say.
We seek professional clarification on it from Main Municipal Association, and they came back with a ruling on it, so...
And you seek eleven point eleven. Is that what you sent in? That, that information?
Just one moment, and I'll tell you exactly what I sent in.
I guess I want to add one thing. You actually made a statement that you think the public will see it the same way. Isn't that what you said?
Yes, I do.
We'll find out in November.
Yes.
If the public feels the same way you will, you do, then they won't vote him in in November.
Agreed?
That's...
It was section two point oh six prohibition.
Yes, which says that neither him nor his spouse can serve in a full-time job and be on a council.
That's correct.
Yes.
So what's the full-time job that he has?
He does not. He, this code does not say full-time. It says employed. Employed by the town.
Got it. All right, any other discussion items from the public? Any discussion items from the council?
Mayor? I was pursuing the first. Have we heard anything from them?
We got our, we need, we will be getting our June thirtieth statements for our investments on them. We had our last ones almost a year ago. They do this annual presentation. I get the statements much more often than that, but they do a thing with finance generally once a year.
I remember, was it last year, around this time, they came up and met with us?
Yeah, and there have been, overall, they're doing very well. It's a seven or eight percent return, which is high, but that was mitigated by some months of, this is, we track this on a monthly basis.
Right, okay. Perfect, thank you very much.
Anything else? Any update on the engineering study for the drainage issue behind the old flower shop, and also the drainage issue up on, what's the name of that street?
Forest Hill.
Forest Hill, and...
Oh, and up above too?
Woodland Heights.
Woodland Heights, yes. Yes, Mandy Oliver was in last week. She's away this week. She'll be back next week. She met with Jeff to review some additional work, and when she is back, we'll want to schedule a meeting with Jeff and I and Jay to go over some of their findings before they come to council in terms of some of what's going on over in the Forest Hills area and stuff relates to the way the drainage system goes to the existing detention. But yes, they are, she will have recommendations for us.
Okay, any other discussion items from the council? If not, we'll go on to item fourteen, upcoming public hearings, designated topics for committee assignments, and scheduled committee meetings. Do we have any committee meetings? Do we have finance?
We'll have finance and regulatory review prior to the next, if we do finance at 5:30 and regulatory review at 6:00, is that?
All right, good. Okay, we'll go on to item fifteen.
Move it, Jim.
Second.
We have motion and second for adjournment. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.